Okay, I'll call the Oak Park Heights City Council meeting for Tuesday, January 25th, to order. This meeting is being conducted in person at City Hall chambers and by video telephone conference due to the ongoing COVID-19 health pandemic. The meeting will follow the provisions of Minnesota Statute 113D.021. First on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance, since many of you were there. Would you like to stand and do the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the approval of the agenda. We have one additional item under New Business B, traffic calming for 58th Street, and then under Other Council Items and Announcements, Eric has addition of the COVID return to remote meetings process and timeline. Is there any other additions or changes?
I move approval was changed. Second?
Motion by Councilmember Doherty, second by Councilmember Ljunggren. Eric, can you call the roll?
Excuse me, Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ljunggren?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Mayor McComber?
Yes. Next is Council Staff Reports. We got a message yesterday that two of our bills are ready to go through for the legislature when they start. House File 2697 and the match Senate File 2157, and then House File 2698 and Senate File 2156. Let's see, on Friday I had Women in Municipal Government meeting. Today I was at a Zoom meeting with this Small Cities Legislative Agenda. And then this week we have Coalition of Utility Cities, and that'll be going over their legislative agenda. And then on Friday I have Mike Breakfast, that's Metropolitan Council on Affordable Housing, and then National League of Cities Transportation Meeting. And then early next week we've got the League of Minnesota Cities Meeting with basically East Metro Mayors, and that'll be in Oakdale. And then I'll be attending the Advanced Leadership Conference. So far they're still going ahead in person, which is surprising. And then I have the Regional Council of Mayors meeting. And then just as a note after being on these meetings is the League of Minnesota Cities has canceled their Day on the Hill, which they've usually had, since none of the legislators will probably be there in person. They're all going to be doing the entire session virtually. And then likewise with the Minnesota Association of Small Cities, they've canceled their legislative reception that they have every year. And then when I was on the National League of Cities meeting earlier, that conference, they're still going ahead in person for Washington, DC. So that's not going to be virtual, and there will be no way to access any of the sessions for that. And that's all I have. Councilmember Doherty?
Yes, I attended the Parks Commission meeting yesterday. They are going to establish advertising for some vacancies on the Park Commission, so if anybody's interested, and you live in Oak Park Heights, you should consider that. And also due to the fact that they're going to be open, there's open positions, they're going to postpone their election of officers until they're more up to full strength. And then moving, there'll be, we'll be seeing recommendations, I believe, at our next meeting on the park equipment at Swagger, and also the Summer Park Program coordinator position.
Chuck, is it one or two? They have two positions, only two?
Yeah, technically one, but it will be two about.
Okay.
Thank you, Chuck. Next is Councilmember Johnson?
I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Ljunggren?
I have nothing to report. The Planning Commission meeting was canceled for January.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rock?
No report.
Thank you. Are there any staff reports, Chief?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Okay. Any other staff reports? And Jennifer, the Recycling Award?
Mayor Council Trenton Mary Wood at 5819 Oldfield Avenue North were chosen as the Recycling Award winner, and they have selected the Cash Award.
Thank you. Next is Visitor Public Comments Section. This is the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on any item not on the agenda. If there isn't anyone coming forward, then we'll move on to Stillwater Mountain Bike Team Championship Sign Presentation. Mike Rock, is that going to be you?
No, this year we're going to go with the other pony alum and Councilmember Johnson.
Okay.
You know, we're both alum, but 40 years apart.
She's more recent?
Hey, she noted the fact that we both had the same debate coach, even though we're 40 years apart.
So if you guys want to come up, and I know you guys probably have parents, and I just want to say, you guys, you make our city proud, you guys make the school proud, and I'm just really proud to celebrate this win with you guys. So congratulations on your victory this year.
Thank you.
Do you guys want to take a photo?
Get up.
Do you guys want to stand up, so you guys can be in it too?
We'd note that the sign, apparently you've got a different organization now than you put this sign.
Make sure you get pictures.
Nice.
I'm smiling, I promise.
You can see it in your eyes.
Thank you.
I do have a question. How many of you are going to be competing in the Fat Tire Bike Rally? Any of you?
I'm not sure how many will be competing, but I think that a majority of us will be there supporting the team and helping out with the Fat Tire Bike Rally.
Doing some volunteering and those things.
That's on our agenda down the line here tonight.
Real quick, I'm Dan, also I'm the director of the team now, and just wanted to thank you for the partnership with Valley View and the support that you give. Two quick anecdotes. These guys are amazing riders, and as coaches, we get to see them progress and to watch them have fun on the Valley View Trails, to watch them do some of the technical features that our trail boss, Matt Lehman, has put in. Watching kids be able to go through what we call the Rock Garden. I can't do the Rock Garden, and these kids just sail through it beautifully at their young age. It's amazing to watch the development. And then in the summer, I get out and I ride that as an individual, and I'm there in the summer, and I had a guy pull up and ask me, hey, do you ride this trail very often? And I said, yeah, I get to ride a little bit. He has no idea who I am, I'm just Joe Schmo riding. And he said, well, I found it on TrailBuck, which is an app that links to where trails are and things like that. And he said, is it worth the time riding? And I said, absolutely. And then I got to give my spiel about our Stillwater Mountain Bike Team, about our partnership with Oak Park Heights, and that the team has developed this trail. So I just want to make sure that you guys here, thank you for the partnership and the trail that we have access to.
Well, you guys do a heck of a job on there.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it reflects well for you guys as well. Everything that you guys do, we never hear any complaints. How it's well kept and stuff, that's great, and great to see you guys continue to succeed.
The last story, we had a big Zoom call this spring of all the big mountain bike teams in the state. It was something that tried to organize these things, and Mr. Lehman and Matt and I were on the phone call, and one of the other teams had said, hey, you guys win this every year, you know, what are you doing right? And we kind of said, well, we do this, and we do that, the other thing, and one coach chimed in. I won't get the story exactly right, Matt, I'll fix it, but they, one of the teams said, well, I know you guys have a private trail in Oak Park Heights, and you just didn't use it, because it's your private trail. And Matt corrected them and said, no, it's a partnership that we have with Oak Park Heights City, and yes, our kids did a lot of volunteer work and built it, but you need to know that it's a public access, come on over, you can know it anytime. But we're grateful for your support.
Well, you'll remind them if they go over, when they see the sign.
Exactly.
You're going to need to get a bigger pole. Keep adding on to the sign.
That's a good problem to have.
Yes, it is.
But that's the reason why it was, when we started doing this, we had the sign, and then we had the year separate, because it was like, well, that way you could just add on.
We expected you guys to win.
We're pretty fortunate, we're pretty fortunate, so.
Well, thank you to the mountain biking team, and congratulations on your championship, and we expect it every year.
Keep up the hard work, you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Matt Lehman, that's a trail officer, you're the first one.
Okay, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda, which is approved. Bills and Investments, check 67331 to 67784, in the total of $289,183.11. Approved City Council Minutes, January 11th, 2022. Approved Resolution Approving a Gambling Premises Permit Application Made by American Legion Post 491 for Gambling Activity at Fiesta Cancun. Adopt Resolution Granting the Application of Whitetail's Unlimited Metro Area to Conduct a One-Day Raffle at St. Croix Event Center on March 26, 2022. Adopt Resolution Recognizing the Contributions of Hal Peterson as Oak Park Heights Park and Trail Commissioner from 2018 to 2021. And Approve 2022 Prairie Maintenance with Minnesota Native Landscapes Incorporated. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Doherty. Eric, could you read the roll?
Sure, Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ljunggren?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Mayor McComber?
Yes. And then we have no public hearings for tonight, and there is no old business, so we can move on to new business, which is back to the Fat Tire Bike Rally to be held on February 20th, 2022. Eric?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, the Hackett Documentation talks about a second year supporting or advocating approval of the agreement for the Fat Tire Bike Rally, planned to be held on February 20th, 2022. This year, the promoter is the Chillicoon Velo Cycling Club, with the beneficiary of those funds generated being Stillwater Area Scholastic Cycling Advocates, if I remember the whole acronym there. Anyway, it's not so much a race, but rather self-time events. There's a large loop that goes across the bridge, if I'm not mistaken. They did run this last year, and there were no known issues. I think they had about 200 participants last year, it was well received. It was a two-day event last year. I understand there's an event in New Richmond that is like the World Mountain Trails or Fat Tire Bike, Jenny, you know what the heck I'm talking about.
Fat Bike World.
Fat Bike World Championship. So you might see more folks this year than that. However, again, it went well last year, we didn't have any issues. So they are seeking same permissions again. The city's tool is an agreement, draft of which is enclosed, it might have a few tweaks, but ultimately, staff certainly recommend approval. They are a nonprofit organization. Last year, if I recall, you did waive the fees and the deposit, so if you wanted to take that action as well, that would be up to the council as well. So with that, it's largely the same as last year, updated dates, and a slightly different sponsor. We do have the proof of insurance, we'll just wait for the state and/or the county approvals as well.
I'd make a motion to approve it, doing the same as last year, for going the fees.
Second?
Any further discussion? Motion by Councilmember Doherty, second by Councilmember Ljunggren. Eric?
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ljunggren?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Mayor McComber?
Yes. Next, we have the traffic calming on 58th Street, and as you can see, I had Eric send all of you the copy of the email that I received from Alexis Schmitz at the high school, a project that she's working on, considering some safety improvements along 58th Street, especially where the curve is, basically toward the entrance to Kowalski's and across from the entrance for the high school. And that spot tends to ice up, especially during the winter. I don't know if it's because it doesn't get enough sun. But there's also the speeding that goes on back and forth. She came up with some suggestions to put up one of those radar signs, like we see in other cities, your speed is, you know, it's supposed to be 45, or it's supposed to be 40, or whatever it is, and somebody's going 55. And it does tend to bring their attention that they're going too fast. Did email back and forth with the chief, and if he's in the room, maybe he can speak to some of the suggestions that he sent to me. Chief?
Yep, thanks, Mayor. So a couple months ago, last year, we kind of looked into this a little bit, City Engineer Administrator and Public Works, some of the concerns with the new construction project that's coming with Norrell, the Highway 36. My concern was the traffic congestion that we're going to see on 58. And so, you know, bottom line is that we looked at other, we're looking at other options, whether that be a bump out to put squad cars for traffic enforcement, whether that's a stop sign at Kruger, whether that's a speed limit change, and some of that's already been kind of looked at too, along with these speed limit signs that display. In any event, if the council chooses to, it sounds like a great project for the student. And if, I guess, Mayor, if you want to assign her to staff, I guess I would be more than happy to help her navigate the task. I'm not sure what all goes into it, if she's looking, you know, we're looking at multiple things, and this is one of those ideas, was to put up those traffic signs that display the speed limit and whereabouts, but.
Well, my suggestion was as it was to you, that I get a lot of the information from different traffic companies, in particular TACO, that they have the different signs. And maybe with you and the Public Works Director, and then also Alexis, if she's willing to work with both of you to come up with suggestions. I mean, my first instinct is obviously to have the flashing radar sign, your speed is. But maybe you can come up with a good suggestion and bring it back to council. Maybe we can get something in before our construction starts.
Yeah, that sounds great. I think there's a lot of layers there, of course, that we need to look at, and it'd be good for the student to kind of see what all goes into. You know, it's not just the speed limit signs and all the different factors with the city engineers and public works and costs.
And I'd like to thank Alexis for bringing it to our attention. I know all of us drive that path quite often, or drive that way quite often, so it's really nice to see a student take an initiative on something so important to our city. Alexis, I'm not sure if you're on the line, if you'd like to say anything?
Oh, yeah, I'm on. I just wanted to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to listen in, and I appreciate all your suggestions.
Thank you. Then we'll have the chief get in touch with you, or you can call City Hall, you know, call the police chief, and then, like I said, you and the chief and the Public Works Director can come up with something and bring it back to our council.
That sounds very nice. Yes, I would love to.
I was going to say, we're going to put you to work.
Can be the future council members.
Oh, yes.
Okay, would we, should we get a motion to have our staff work with Alexis on getting something put together for?
So.
Second. Okay, who made the motion on that one?
Ljunggren.
Okay. Motion by Ljunggren, second by Johnson. Eric?
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ljunggren?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Mayor McComber?
Yes. Then next, we have other council items or announcements, and Eric, you wanted to talk about the remote meetings?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Council, I did send a memo out this afternoon, a little bit of a follow-up from some of our staff confusion on how we are proceeding with pandemic or not with remote meetings. In a nutshell, I think if the council desires to go to remote or virtual meetings, then the hosting of those meetings or the action of those meetings should fall under the 13D.021, which is what we're under tonight. And it does make it easier to be offsite, it does not have the requirement of being in a public place, although there's a three-time exception for that. However, the challenge we had with falling under that tonight, in terms of how we communicated that last week, was the city technically, formally, at least from my opinion, did not state we are falling under the pandemic. It's not prudent. However, how do we revoke that, or how do we reconvene? What standard are we using this for? Especially in light of the action the council discussed last time on the 11th, where it basically slated four or five meetings throughout the month of February, which basically we'd have to all turn to remote. So I guess where we are at the staff is to say, if you want to have virtual meetings, we have no objection on it all, that's fine. We just, helpful for us to clarify it, and also, what's also helpful is to say, when, what parameter is, are we attaching that binding to, such as what health response, or what index do we want to attach it to? When do we come back? Is there a 30-day window, a 60-day window? So for right now, I don't think much is going to change between now and February 7th, much less how can we make that determination at staff level. So that's where we are challenged. We're not health experts, obviously, and we don't want to be. Maybe we profess we are, but certainly we're not. Anyway, so where we stand right now is that the meetings are not going to be virtual, as of right now. The last formal action the council took that I can absolutely document was back in May, where the council, or maybe it was June, where everything after July 1st, 2021, was back in person. So for us, going back and forth is challenging. If it's warranted, fine, but that's where we are. I'd certainly also defer to Jenny or Kevin if they want to add on, and thank you for letting, for helping out on this memo, too.
So with that being said, we don't need anything. The plan is for the next February, the first meeting in February is we're staying?
We'd be, we would not be virtual.
I was going to say, our first meeting in February is workshop on the 7th.
On the 7th.
7th.
And then our regular meeting and the workshop are on the 8th.
So we're planning for all those to be in person?
I was going to say, I think that's the current plan, but I think if we wanted to, I think we could say it's practical and prudent, given the demographics of Oak Park Heights being typically vulnerable populations, they're extremely vulnerable with the rise of the Omicron variant, that it is a practical or prudent to have public meetings that might subject numbers of the public to the variant. But that might give us enough justification if that's the choice we'd like to go down.
I think you have justification to certainly do it. I think that the challenge with it is, is?
How do you go back?
When do you go back? Again, staff has no preferences. Okay, if this is, if that's the council's decision this evening, so for the next 30 days, we will go virtual. Okay. But we can't say we're going to go virtual for this meeting and not the next one.
Yeah.
It's impossible to schedule the meeting, certainly coordinate the, the televising is challenging in and of itself. So that's where we're asking for some clear guidance. Otherwise, as of right now, everything will be in person.
What do people want to do?
I'm okay with staying in person.
I'm okay with staying in person. If there's council members that prefer, I'm okay with them.
Well, I do think that because the Omicron is still going, and who knows if it's ever going to end or when it's going to end. I mean, you go by the CDC guidelines or Department of Health, you know, wear masks. Now they're saying to go to the N95 mask. I see more and more where people aren't wearing masks. There are the breakthrough cases, and as Carly just mentioned there, demographically, you know, there could be people that can't be there, don't feel comfortable to be there. We have staff members that we don't want them to get sick. We need them there to be running City Hall for us. And if you look at, say, even the legislature, it's an even meeting in person. I've seen different businesses. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, the House isn't, the Senate looks like they're going to be in person.
But so many things, like I said, are being canceled in person, not all of them, but some are.
Yeah, there was actually a bit of a poll going around in the city attorney listserv here recently, kind of, someone posted a comment on the listserv saying, hey, whose cities are going back to virtual meetings? And it was interesting, because there was really a wide variety of responses. You know, it was almost 50/50, I think, back and forth between cities going back to virtual meetings versus cities staying in person. And so certainly there's a lot of uncertainty or waffling even amongst the various cities as to what to do and how to deal with what's going on right now. And so, you know, the fact that we're having the same kind of debate about these issues is commonplace across the state right now. And I think part of what the staff's memo tried to get across was, you know, if staff could have some more particular parameters in place from the mayor and council as to, you know, if infection rates are at a certain level or whatever, that that will trigger going to virtual meetings, that would make it a lot easier for staff to track and understand what the council's intention was, as opposed to this sort of free-flowing debate that happens on a meeting-by-meeting basis. I think that's what staff prefers to avoid, because it leaves staff in a state of uncertainty as how meetings need to be noticed, and what sort of technology needs to be set up, and things of that nature. And so, it doesn't sound like.
What are other cities doing? Since you said it was 50/50, how are they going back to, what standard are they using?
Well, I think they're basing it on the fact that the pandemic issues are flaring up, and they're utilizing that 13D.021 as the basis to do so. And so, you know, technically that statute says that the mayor, the city administrator, or even I have the authority under the statute to make those decisions. But certainly, I think also the council as a whole can choose to provide its input on whether that happens or not. But, you know, I think neither Eric nor I wants to be the arbiter of those decisions on behalf of the council. But I want to put words in your mouth, Eric, but.
Yeah, no. One thing would be if we go remote, we would have to reschedule the tour. One thing would be if we go remote, we would have to reschedule the two workshops, the first two workshops in February, because we were doing them because in person is the one with...
They were desired to be in person, correct?
Right, I mean, that's the one with Amy on the, no, I don't have my calendar.
The 7th.
And then following night, we were gonna have the presentation from Kane Plant Advisory. So I would think...
And I do think that we could potentially just do hybrid. You know, those that want to be in City Hall, or those that can't come to City Hall, they were doing like we are tonight, so that they're...
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Carly.
I was gonna say, if you're allowed to make that determination, could, would that be something that you would want to look back? I think right now, we don't have enough data in front of us to come up with a metric, but it seems like you or Eric or Kevin have the capability of looking at those metrics and kind of coming up with that determination.
Would it be the metric?
And we certainly could get that, because county board meeting this morning, they had a work session totally just devoted to COVID, maybe we can get all that data from the county. That was pretty specific with, you know, as far as what the numbers were and how the scale was going, and it didn't, it didn't look good yet, you know? We hope that it's gonna come back down, or flatten the line, or whatever they call it, that it does slow down, but, and no other variant pops up in the meantime. But right now, I see, I mean, even on Sunday, I went to another funeral of another person that died of COVID, and it's just depressing to see the numbers of people who are either getting infected or passing away from this virus. I think we need, we all took an oath that we were gonna protect the health, safety, and welfare of our city, and that includes our employees, we need to be mindful of their health as well. So that's where I was going with go-to-hybrid meetings, you know, some in the council chambers, some remotely. It had worked in the past. Not that it all has to be virtual, but the hybrid.
I think we're all okay with it, we just have to come up with the direction for staff, which I think would require more data.
Would it, or can we just set a date, say, 30 days? Kevin?
Would that be okay? Eric's gonna say yes.
I think that would be just fine.
February 28th.
Days, and hopefully, can I finish? Just hopefully that if we see the numbers coming down, we can always say, okay, that's it, we're doing good. If the numbers are still where they are, or if they're going higher, and variant, we can revisit it, but put it at a 30-day for now.
So then we, are we postponing our workshops then until March?
We don't have to, I mean, we can still do them hybrid.
I thought the purpose sucked out, the one was for us to all be in person.
Right.
If we can, if we can be spread out enough and everybody has masks on, I think we could do that.
I think the one with the...
The goals, or the team building in particular.
The one with the...
With the advisory counts, with the advisory board?
Yeah, they wanted that to be in person. I would miss the board, if we're gonna do a hybrid, I mean, it sounds like we're saying one thing, but now we're saying, but now, okay, because we have these workshops, we just do something else. I see they're all or nothing. I say if we have to postpone the workshops till March, then we do that.
Yep, I would agree. That's where I was going with it. If we're gonna, if we're gonna be off the grid, then let's not be trying to makeshift stuff to get these in there, and let's just do that, postpone it till March.
Kevin and Eric, so we're gonna roll if we keep doing this. We did look at us, look at that, and the chief will have to do it from his car, and...
The weather might be warmer in March, hopefully.
I also think with the statute, I think Kevin will have to check on this, but I think if we make it all virtual, we'd have to stay all virtual with the practical and prudent thing as staff directed us. So all virtual for 30 days, which would put us, our two meetings in February, and the Parks and Planning Commission for February, virtual?
Uh, Planning Commission's canceled, so that'll be all right.
So Kevin, could I ask if, so what staff will do, other than that's, we'll work with Mayor, and Kevin, and I will, what we hear from all of you is that it's practical and prudent under, to hold our meetings for the next 30 days from today, whatever those are, will be all virtual. And then the work sessions slated for February 8th will be postponed?
On the 7th.
And the 7th. We do want to consider our check-in with Lockridge Grindle on February 28th, but that shouldn't be a problem, because they'll probably want to zoom in on that anyways.
I don't think Angie, I don't think Angie will be a part of that one.
That's true.
She'll be busy.
So that's what we hear from you folks, and that's, Kevin, is that what you hear, young man?
It is, and, you know, I think in this concept of hybrid, the legislature and the interpretation of that statute, I think generally allows for that. The only caveat that the powers that be have kind of indicated for that is, if you're gonna have any of your council members in council chambers, you do have to also allow public to attend in person if they so choose. You can't have the members of the council at chambers but say, none of the public can come in. But the flip side being, if all the council members at home, you generally can, other than one, you can exclude the public from chambers. And so that's kind of the touchy subject with hybrid-type meetings, but otherwise, what you're saying makes sense.
But virtually, because it is an open meeting, they are always welcome to join and watch the meeting, or if they have a comment that they could, anyone from the public can make a comment, during the public comment, period, if it's not pertinent to the agenda. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is council okay with that?
Yep.
Yes.
You know, I can't see you again, so...
Yes.
So these are not hybrid meetings? These are?
All virtual.
All virtual.
Gotcha.
So you need a motion?
I think it would be a good idea to have a motion on this one.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Ljeljegren. Eric?
Councilmember Doherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ljeljegren.
Yes.
Councilmember Rock.
Yes.
Mayor McCumber.
Yes. Are there any other council items or announcements?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Rock, second by Councilmember, was that Ljeljegren?
Yep.
Eric?
Councilmember Doherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ljeljegren.
Yes.
Councilmember Rock.
Yes.
Mayor McCumber.
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Recording stopped.
Have a good night.
You, too.